First meeting of the year, so welcome everyone. Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Here.
Alderman Lorick.
Here.
Duke Niack.
Here.
Alderman Toman is excused. Alderman Gale?
Here. And just as a point of order, I will maintain my vote for the residents of the fifth district tonight and run the meeting in Mayor Dan's absence.
And Alderman Guzekowski.
Here.
Great. Pledge allegiance. Jimmy, you want to lead us to the glorious thing? All right. Okay. Tom?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number one is a resolution. Oh, sorry. Excuse me. Item number three, approval of minutes of the meeting December 19, 2017. Anyone get a chance to take a look at those?
Guzekowski can make a motion to approve the meetings of 12, 19, 17. Duke Niack second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Alderman Lorick.
Aye.
Duke Niack.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Great. Now we'll move on. Item number four is a resolution to Corey A. Luzak, retiring firefighter. Have the clerk read that into the record.
Resolution 11901-011618, resolution of commendation to Corey A. Luzak. Whereas Corey A. Luzak will be retiring from his position as firefighter effective January 3, 2018, after 24 years and two months of dedicated full-time service to the City of Oak Creek Fire Department. And whereas during his years of service, Corey has performed his duties admirably, looking out for the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Oak Creek. And whereas Corey responded to many major alarms utilizing his skills in firefighting and rescue and dedication without hesitation. And whereas Corey has been an emergency medical technician in the state of Wisconsin and during his career has cared for thousands of citizens who were sick or injured, always delivering caring and skilled emergency care to them. Whereas Corey conducted many tours and participated in fire prevention activities for the children of Oak Creek during his career. And whereas Corey was the lead person in minor equipment maintenance and repair. Whereas Corey was on several vehicle committees, having input and review of new purchases of engines and ambulances. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and common council of the city of Oak Creek for and on behalf of the citizens of the city of Oak Creek that sincere gratitude and appreciation be extended to Corey A. Luzak for his many years of dedicated and faithful service to the city of Oak Creek and the fire department. That the best wishes for good health and happiness be extended to Corey A. Luzak and his family on his retirement. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of this meeting, that the city clerk is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Corey A. Luzak, cast and adopted the 16th day of January 2018.
Great. Catherine, appreciate that. Want to commend firefighter Luzak. Tom, do you want to make any comments or bike?
Just one, one quick one for Corey is not everybody aspires to be the, you know, law officers or chief or anything. And Corey was kind of your meat and potatoes firefighter. And I think any guy that worked in the department with us would want to work on his shift because he was always polite, always a good work ethic. And you talk about the vehicle maintenance, he just finished up on our latest engine purchase. And his forte is fixing old cars and things to see that the guy's a miracle worker with Bondo, so. But in the whole essence, his family also has a tradition. His son is now a police officer in South Milwaukee, and his dad was a police officer in South Milwaukee. So out of the whole group, I think Corey was the smartest, so. But he's doing well, and his wife has got him working, raising actually horses and taking care of that down in Caldoria. He did a good job.
Fantastic. Thanks, Chief. So on behalf of the City of Oak Creek, we commend firefighter Luzak on his retirement. Wish him well. Motion?
Kowski can make a motion that the council adopt resolution number 11901-011618, a resolution of commendation to Corey A. Luzak, retiring firefighter.
Oracle second.
Roll call.
Alderman Duke Niack.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Item number five is a resolution to commend James Perino, retiring electric inspector. I'll have Catherine read that into the record as well.
Resolution 11902-011618, resolution of commendation to James P. Perino. Whereas James Perino began his employment with the City of Oak Creek on April 28, 1999, is a full-time electrical inspector. And whereas Jim Perino has retired from his position as electrical inspector effective January 3, 2018, after serving over 18 years and eight months of full-time service to the City of Oak Creek. Whereas Jim was a very effective employee during his years of service with the City of Oak Creek Inspection Department, answering many calls and providing immeasurable service to the community. And whereas Jim Perino has responded to street light knockdowns at all hours of the night and conducted inspections to numerous to count. And whereas Jim during his years of service has performed his duties admirably, always looking out for the health, safety, and welfare of this great community and the residents of the city of Oak Creek. And whereas Jim received recognition from the Wisconsin Department of Safety and Professional Services commending the inspection department on plan review efforts and maintenance of thorough and well-organized inspection records. And now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and the common council of the city of Oak Creek for and on behalf of the citizens of the city, that sincere gratitude and appreciation be extended to Jim Perino for his years of dedicated and faithful service to the city of Oak Creek and the Oak Creek Inspection Department. And that best wishes for good health and happiness be extended to James P. Perino and his family on his retirement. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of this meeting and that the city clerk be and is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to James Perino, cast and adopted the 16th day of January 2018.
Hey, thank you, Catherine. Mike, you have sports?
Sure. Thanks, Ken. Jim, you've been with the city for 19 years, and I've worked with you for all 19 of those years. And in that time, you've been outstanding coworker and friend to just about everybody here in City Hall, so we appreciate that. You've also taught me enough, just enough to be dangerous in the electrical field. So I think that just speaks to what you are. You're a teacher. And so again, very much appreciated. I guess I'd say, as I've seen you work, I'd say that you've, the word fair comes to mind, conscientious, dedicated, so just the consummate professional and gentleman. So thanks so much for your service.
Thanks, Mike. Anyone else?
Fire also would like to thank Jim for all, over the years, on some of the fire investigations. And we've had some crazy ones and interesting that Jim's helped us solve, and generators and unique way that people use electricity in their houses. And the fact that Jim was always out there, and also during our city's disasters, Jim was working aside Eddie and everybody in inspection department when we had all the flooding and all that that went on. So always around local Oak Creek, married to a Komarowski, so another Oak Creek family. So good luck, Jim.
Great. Thanks, Tom. Jim, on behalf of the city, obviously, we wish you well in your retirement, obviously carry on, and really appreciate your service. It's been a great experience for us. If you want, you're more than welcome to say a few words, certainly. Jimmy, why don't you come up to the microphone so we can get you on the record?
I want to thank the council for the proclamation. I also want to thank the council for the gift certificate, and the city for the gift certificate from Calvin Schrader for the years of service. 19 years, a lot longer than I figured I would be here, but hey, it was, time flies when you're having fun. I hope I left the city in better shape than when I got here, and that's because of the people I work with. The people in the city are great people, and sometimes they go unappreciated, but boy, oh, boy, they made me look good, and they helped me do my job to the best of my ability. So other than that, that's about all I got to say. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Jimmy. You're the epitome of the kind of employees we want. Great. We'll need a motion on item number five then.
Kowski can make a motion to council adopt resolution number 11902-011618, a resolution of commendation to James P. Perino, retiring electrical inspector.
Oracle second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Duke Niack.
Aye.
Great. We have one public hearing on the agenda tonight, and that's for conditional use, to consider a request by Samuel D. Dickman, 4545 LLC for conditional use permit for freight yard, freight terminal, transshipment depot uses on the property at 10651 South Oakview Parkway. Catherine?
Public hearing number one is to consider a request submitted by Samuel D. Dickman, 4545 LLC for a conditional use permit for freight yard, freight terminal, transshipment depot uses on the property at 10651 South Oakview Parkway. Applicant is Samuel D. Dickman, 4545 LLC, property owner, K&amp;Z Partners 2 LLC. There follows the legal description. Date of notice is November 29, 2017.
Doug, you going to kick that off?
Sure. Good evening. Doug Seymour, Director of Community Development for the City of Oak Creek. And as was stated earlier, this is a public hearing on conditional use permit for the property at 10651 South Oakview Parkway. The Oakview Business Park, that would allow a freight terminal and transshipment depot use on the property. So the applicant, 4545 LLC, or the Dickman Company, is requesting this conditional use permit, in part because the, a portion or good portion of the building that they're leasing at that site has a tenant that falls under the classification of a transshipment depot. We do have, obviously, uses in the manufacturing zoning districts do allow significant trucking uses. The distinction here being is that that is their business, it's just not they're handling the product that they make or they distribute, what it is, they're actually a freight business. So with that in mind, there would be approximately 75 employees during the daytime shift, hours of operation, 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, with some potential weekend work. Substantial park, truck parking on the south side of the building, and I do have a site plan which was approved by the Plan Commission earlier, just to show you the scope of that. So it's, again, it's kind of the southwest corner of the Oakview Business Park. The Plan Commission, at their meeting back in November of last year, has recommended approval of the conditional use permit. They've also approved, had previously approved, the site and building plans for this development. And this is what you see in front of you this evening, a landscape plan showing that. And you can see that the truck court and the building is landscaped very well in accordance with some of the standards that we've developed for the Oakview Business Park. So with that in mind, this is a public hearing. Anyone has any questions or comments regarding the proposed conditional use permit for 4545 LLC for the property at 10651 South Oakview Parkway? Please fill out an appearance form when your name is called. Please approach the podium and proceed to address the council with your questions or comments as public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Doug. We'll make three calls for commentary. Sam or, did you want to make a statement? Okay. First call for comment? Second call? All right. Third call? All right. Seeing no commentary, we'll close the public hearing, open up to comments, questions from the council. Anybody have anything to address the developers or ask questions? Steve?
I can, I think this can go to Doug. Is this truck traffic going to be the same route that FedEx folks are going to use?
Yeah, there's no trucking, aside from local deliveries west on Oakwood Road, all directed towards the state highways.
That's it.
Great, thanks. Anybody else? Any commentary on the planning that you can relate?
It's pretty well laid out here. The only thing that came up at Plan Commission that we talked about were the hours of operation, which we went over, and that's in our handout here from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And, but that may vary based on the tenant use. But other than that, it was pretty easy.
Great. And I, that's my district. I didn't receive any commentary that I know from anybody in the district on the building. So Sam, it looks like a good product. I appreciate the fact you've done a good job in terms of screening the truck parking, so we appreciate that, and we look forward to your participation down there. Appreciate your, your activity there. With that, we're going to move on to item number seven, which is the ordinance to approve the conditional use permit for freight yard, freight terminal, transshipment depot uses on the property at 10651 South Oakview Parkway. Motion?
Oracle move that the council adopt ordinance number 2895 approving a conditional use permit for freight yard, freight terminal, transshipment depot uses on the property at 10651 South Oakview Parkway.
Niack second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Duke Niack.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Great. On our new business, then, item eight is an informational, we have the Tourism Commission to provide a council, common council with a recap of the 2017 events. Take care, you guys. Good luck. I'm a member of the Tourism Commission, so I think other members of the common council appreciate what you have to offer, Corey, so have at it.
Well, I'm Kristin.
Kristin, make sure you pull the mic in front of your mouse.
Better?
There you go.
Okay.
There you go.
Well, I'm Kristin Koaleski, a destination marketing specialist for the city. And before we get into the recap presentation, I just wanted to give some background. So the Tourism Commission was formed just last year, and the commission uses revenue from local room tax for tourism within the city. And last year, as a group, we thought the best way to increase tourism is by creating these community events. And we work with Savage Solutions to strategically market these events, to bring people into the city. So with that, I will give it over to Corey, and we will give our presentation.
I'll steal the mic. Corey Savage, founder, principal at Savage Solutions, have been working with the city now for six years, and starting from rebranding the city to a bunch of other stuff. So I've challenged myself with doing a six years' worth of work in less than four minutes in a presentation to really focus on what we're going to be doing in 2018, and more importantly, focus on what we're doing in 2017. But it would make the most sense to also talk about, this isn't just about what we've done for the city, is there's truly an army behind everything we do, from Alderman Gale to Doug to Leslie to a bunch of other people that have given tons of time. We would say that this year was a huge success in terms of what we wanted to do, but I'd also want to give kudos to Kristin. The city is in a, in great hands with her being at the helm of the Tourism Commission, as she's made ridiculously great relationships. People are coming to the city for just about everything that you could think. So I wanted to give kudos to her as we jumped into the presentation. So this is a, this is about a journey. This journey literally is a six-year journey, and I'm going to fly through it. We were commissioned by the city in 2013 to create a brand, Promise. We actually rebranded the city in 2014. We focused 15 and 16 on really highlighting, attracting businesses to the area before this big Drexel Town Square was announced. And in 2017, we really tried to drive retail with what we're going to show you today. And then 2018 is really take advantage of some of the big retailers coming to the market, in particular Ikea. In 2013, we created a great brand, as everybody has seen, it's all over this building, we're very, very proud of the work that was done. And we got right to work with introducing the brand to the market with a giant brand reveal with over 300 people in attendance to see what the brand was consisted of. And you can start to see it through this vision. And we, during this presentation, for the aldermen that haven't seen it, as well as anybody that wanted to see how we got to what we're about to present. The brand lives in a whole bunch of different places as we scroll through these great images of everything that the brand has to offer, to advertisements, to building giant photo libraries to use, not only in social media, but to use in a bunch of different things as well. Imagery that is at the fingertips of the City of Oak Creek, which are just great photos of people, of establishments, of different seasonalities, of probably one of the most beautiful lakefronts that we hope more and more people get to enjoy, to the great parks and the great trails. Then we went to focus on building business and talking about how businesses can be attracted to the area, and worked hand-in-hand with Doug Seymour on making sure that everybody knew that Oak Creek was open for business, as well as it was a great place to do business. And I think that it's been an eye-opener for the rest of the state and the rest of the region. And we told these great stories about people that have opened businesses in Oak Creek, from small two-person businesses to large corporations such as Nucor and a bunch of others, too. And it all culminated into really building a platform that was a place of information for business to go to, even jumped into a project to help raise funds for the library. So the building for our future library campaign was another one that we did. And as we got through promoting the businesses, we were asked to do business extensions. So we were part of the project of naming and branding the Lake Vista Project, as well as naming and branding the Oakview Business Park, which, that land, as you see and know, is just such a spectacle and such an opportunity for bigger businesses to come in. We've told a lot of great stories. One in particular, my favorite story, is the Eater Flag story, which, for those that don't know, they produce more American flags than any other place in the United States, as well as they were the firm that produced the most famous American flag, which was the flag that was shown at 9/11 at the base of Bull Tower. So just a great story on, I think 70% of their employees are from Oak Creek, which is just incredible. So it's just, I told a story about a great little pizza place you have here, DeCarlo's, to all kinds of different stories, and some of the great photography that's been captured along the way, to opening of the Yow Fresh, to my particularly favorite place, which is Georgie Porgie's, only because my children are featured in this photo, because we had no budget for models, so it cost me a couple cheeseburgers. To basically continuing to push information out there. So for those that aren't aware, there is a website that's called Business in Oak Creek. It's a great website where we're actually, on a regular basis, curating content. And one of the new featured stories was Master Lock's move to the new building. The traffic to this website's actually pretty high in terms of people that are coming to figure out what it's like to do business with Oak Creek. Great stories. We built a great video to talk about the advantages and everything that's been going on with Oak Creek for the last five years, all the great street banners, from working with Catherine on the Great Campaign of Military Heroes, to all the different visuals that you've seen. We've really worked hard on making Oak Creek a destination for a whole bunch of different audiences. Ad campaigns, ads featured in the MMAC Real Estate Development Magazine, to, you can name it, to, we were here live as you guys announced the Ikea, and we were doing live content feeds to the public on what it meant from an insider's point of view. Just lots of really good stuff. So that brings us to 2017 year. We set some really great goals of, as Kristin said, of curating some standalone events that are unique to Oak Creek. And we used 2017 to kind of set the benchmarks of what we wanted 2018 and beyond to look like. So I would say that we overachieved in 2017. I'd say that from what we're going to show you, too, is the people that did participate in the events not only took away the fact that it was great, we were able to survey participants, reached capacity at Drexel Town Square for some of these events, and we've started some events that people are already asking for moving into the new year. For everything that you need to know, too, there's a website that mimics the business site, which we were able to do on a really shoestring budget, too, is visit OakCreek.com, which the traffic's actually really, really high with that, and it correlates with the social media platforms that we have, too. So if you want to visit, visit OakCreek.com. It's live, has all the different events that we're doing. These are the five events that we did this year, everything from dog day at Drexel to the movie night, to the infamous Beer Garden, to the sneak peek at Oak Creek, and then culminating with the Fall Festival. One of the nice things to know is Kristin was able to capture data that basically said that more than half of the people come to Oak Creek are not from Oak Creek, from a tourism standpoint. That's a huge home run for us, is knowing that it's not just local people coming, it's people outside of the community that are coming. So 54% of the people actually are from outside of Creek that attend these events. This event is standalone, not a lot of communities have it. Anytime you put dogs, let them jump off platforms into water, have treats for them, it's a great event. We ran a ton of different promos, from TV to radio to digital. We have one of the highest open rates on our email marketing campaigns, to our social platforms of Facebook. We estimated that we had roughly 2,500 people, or 2,500 people come to this event, which is really off the charts. And we're really excited because that was year two of the event, and we're moving into year three next year. As with any event, we're always going to put the cutest pictures of the cutest kids on. But movie night is a great thing, it's probably one of the only outdoor movie nights that you can do in this region. So we did four of them, June 23, July 21, August 25, and September 22. Weather depicts a lot of attendance, but we were really happy with the way that the attendance turned out. We had roughly around 450 people. Once again, some traditional media to get people there, we have a relationship with WISN that we do stuff, too, but I'm putting posters around and letting people know, we're expecting attendance next year to jump. And it's always fun to have people sitting out in your square watching a movie. And one of the data points that we're really interested in is how many of these people come here and then actually go and spend an additional, either source of funds or additional time at one of the retailers in Oak Creek, too. To the Beer Garden, we're in Wisconsin, anytime you put beer anywhere, people are going to go, but we were really happy with the way that the Beer Garden turned out. We're really looking forward to the Beer Gardens of this year, which Kristin and I think we're doing two Beer Gardens this year. So just a great community event, great beer, great food, everybody seemed to be happy, weather had a lot to do with it, too. And we did a lot of advertising for it, too, but this is probably one of the more successful events, we had 6,000 people attend. So as you're looking at it from a tourism standpoint, we're poised with how many people are we actually reaching, how many people are coming in. Ultimately, we want them to stay at Oak Creek Hotels and spend revenue in Oak Creek, so this is a true sign that the events are actually generating attendance. And that led to the next event, which was sneak peek in Oak Creek, which was an event where people could go get an inside look at Oak Creek establishments and Oak Creek businesses. Very well attended. We're really looking forward to growing on this in year two, we learned a lot in year one. But we did all the same traditional medias that you would expect to, and we estimated around 250 people in attendance, to what I thought was our best event of the year, which was the Fall Festival, which just so happened to be 72 with no humidity that day, too, so weather is another depiction. It was one of the most beautiful days of the fall, which we totally planned for. So it was just a great event for families to come out, and there's lots of things for people to do. Did a lot of advertising for it in the same way that we did before. A lot of advertising was actually inherited by Kristin and myself, too, as a lot of things were signed off on before we started to get into this, but it worked really well. And we had 2,500 people come to the Fall Festival. So if you think about that, that's a lot of people. And the nice thing about it, too, is Kristin was able to put together surveys to figure out where people were coming from, and it's important for us to know, too, is it also helps us plan into going to 2018, but a lot of people are coming from our social media channels, which is great. Like to commend the city and the audience that they have with their social media channels, particularly Facebook. But people are starting to really try to figure out what's next in Oak Creek, what's coming up. So it was great, which leads me right into something that I know we're all excited about. We helped curate all the information and the brand of the farmer's market, and we're really excited about where that's going. Starts in June of this year, and we're excited to see what this can be. Our goal for the farmer's market is pretty lofty, but we want this to be the absolute best farmer's market in southeast Wisconsin, on the same wavelengths as what they're doing in Madison. We really think that we have the opportunity to do so here. There's a lot of people working really hard on the farmer's market, there's a lot of really cool stuff that's going to be coming out that you can see on your screens. So basically, from an accomplishment standpoint, we're able to really brand all the events, extremely thoughtful and successful promotions. I'd say that the Oak Creek brand is one of the more recognizable community brands throughout Wisconsin now, we're really excited about that. There's awesome swag. When we say swag, we're talking about t-shirts and mugs and everything else, too, so make sure you hit Kristin up for some of that stuff. We know who we're talking to, and we know what they want to hear, which is an important thing in the world that we live in. We continue to grow our Facebook presence, we're getting a lot of user-generated content, which basically means we don't have to create everything, we're getting content created from people that are engaged with us. And we have standalone event-based website, which we're looking forward to. So our goals for 2018.
So for 2018, we are looking to grow the events we currently have, we're hoping that they become a staple in the community, so that each year they can look forward to these events and maybe even grow them to two-day events, and increase hotel stays overnight. So, and we're also looking to grow attendance at the event and get more people to see Drexel Town Square. A lot of people in the community have said, you know, hey, I've never seen this great space that we have here, so we're hoping to spread not only in Oak Creek, but in the space that we have here, so we're hoping to spread not only in Oak Creek, but in the Milwaukee County.
And lucky for us is, we did a behind-the-scenes capture of all the events, so for those that weren't actually able to be here, we thought it'd be best to leave and end the presentation with kind of a all-encompassing video that was at all the events. For those that didn't see, and I hope the volume works, I can't plug in, so if you can't hear it, I apologize. With that, if there's any questions or comments?
Any comments, questions on the council?
I just have a comment. Not too long ago, close to 18, 20 years ago, it was the City of Oak Creek's position to not be responsible for, or take a priority on providing special events or quality-of-life programs for the citizens of the community. Government, city government at that time felt it was the function of other agencies in our community to take care of that need. So, being an employee of one of those agencies, I mean, it's difficult to try and provide quality programming for everybody. So, what the Tourism Commission is doing with the blessings of the city is so incredibly exciting to me, as an elected official, but also as a citizen as well. What you put forward for presentation today are some incredibly, you know, valuable programs for our community, and the numbers back that up. So, to city leaders, thank you for the vision and taking that step of, hey, let's get involved. We have the resources available to provide quality-of-life programs for our community, for taking that step into the Tourism Commission, for following through on everything. So, job well done. Thank you, guys. Looking forward to 2018.
Thanks, Rich. Anybody else? Andrew?
Just a couple comments, thank you Ken for that. I think it's important to stress just a few things, and one of them being, just to remind everybody in the room and remind everybody at home, that these tourism dollars that we're spending to bring additional people and additional spend into this community come from not your general property taxes in the city, but through hotel motel room tax dollars, which, you know, arguably the vast majority are coming from outside of the community, right? So, that's a really important reminder, we're doing this not with general property taxes of the citizens of Oak Creek, but through hotel motel room tax dollars. I think also what we learned this year was that parking issues at DTS is a perception issue and not a reality issue. Certainly, we had a few, we had a few instances where the parking was stressed, but never to a point of no return where there was a true safety or timing issue with people trying to locate parking. And as we try to grow these events at Drexel Town Square and elsewhere in the community, which is also an important point, but at Drexel Town Square, we have, hopefully are growing the capacity and the attendance at these events, but this year, more parking is coming online to be able to absorb that attendance. So, I think that was a really important point to make to those out there. We also have some unsung heroes, and these events don't just happen. I'd like to give special commendation to the Department of Public Works, who work very hard in not only setting up for these events, but also taking down and cleaning up, they did a bang-up job, and I just wanted to commend the men and women out there. Also, it's important to recognize that this was a learning year for the entire city, and there was a lot of evolution on the fly. And I think, you know, I think it's important to recognize other city departments, the Health Department, the Community Development Department, the City Clerk's Office, who prioritized the special events coming to this community, the first ever's, and really found a way to be flexible in terms of age-old policies, procedures, and practices that the city had in terms of liquor licenses, or X, Y, and Z, 1, 2, 3, health inspections, food inspections for our food truck events. It was really, really a nimble staff this year, and we learned a lot, and we'll look to grow, look to grow as the events do next year. But when, and finally, when we look at 16 to 17, in 2016, which I wasn't here, we had Dog Day at Drexel. In 2017, we had everything that was laid out in that presentation, and the common denominator of that success was Kristen, our Destination Marketing Specialist. This went off relatively without any sort of a hitch, there was never a public safety issue, there was never an electrical issue. All of these events were safe, most importantly, and well-attended secondarily, and Kristen handled the logistics on everything. So, Kristen, great year, we look forward to growing these events, growing events elsewhere in the city, outside of Drexel Town Square, and just thank you for your work in your first year here.
Thank you, Chris.
I just have just a couple things, you know, first of all, thank you Cory for that video at the end. It's a good reminder, when you look around at our tourism, you know, oftentimes, we're always leaving Oak Creek, or were leaving Oak Creek, to go to these different events. It's nice to be able to just stay in Oak Creek and enjoy these events, so thank you
Just a comment from, as I said earlier, I'm on the Tourism Commission. I know, you know, Doug and Jerry, you and I and the others went down this pathway when this originally came out of the legislature, what a double-edged sword this Tourism Commission concept was, because these funds, the tourism room tax dollars, they typically flow into the general fund, they were used for various ongoing, just regular activities that cities need to do and provide for their citizens as operations go throughout the year. So, the fact that this was carved off by the legislature in kind of one fell swoop without a whole lot of input from the locals was a little bit of a hardship in some regards, but in hindsight, I think, especially given the way we saw fit, I think that to germinate and to kind of orientate and create a body that was responsive and responsible to the city and to its citizens, for its, to really drive, I think the community-building aspects that we really envisioned when this concept was kind of really emboldened. The strategic plan, which is, you know, thankfully, memorialized in the back wall, you can see it, the cultural opportunities and engagement in the community were priorities that went through that entire process. So, I think Cory, your work, and we appreciate everything you've done for that, and Kristen, your work last year is incredible, really has been. The four outside members on that Tourism Commission really are insightful people, bring value to the table from their varied backgrounds, and the folks on staff that regularly attend, Leslie, Catherine, and the rest of the folks who have thrown into that lot to make this a success, I think is really commendable. And I appreciate everything that's been done, and hopefully the momentum continues. And Cory, we appreciate, like I said, I personally appreciate what you bring to the table and bring the value to the city, and we look forward to working together again. And Kristen, kudos to you and congratulations, and onward for 18. Anything else? Oh, sorry, Arden, do you want to make a comment? I was rambling.
Arden Dagder, 8540 South Pennsylvania Avenue. I'm confused with this extra money being spent by the Tourism Commission, the Celebration Commission. It seems as though, we used to have marvelous events, like the Fourth of July, we had the wonderful parade. We've had, apparently, those events now are falling by the wayside. Why, we don't need that anymore. We used to have the tractor show, the events, and especially the Lions Liberty Celebration. I fail to understand why there isn't a group that actually promotes the whole city, instead of a narrow section of particular, we'll say millennials, you're trying to, and I think that's what you're trying to get at with all these other events. And to me, there's, it's just, we're losing the community spirit that we used to have with the events of Memorial Day, and especially the, I always appreciated the July 4th Parade, and with the high school band marching and giving the kids an opportunity, but it doesn't, I just wish there was some way that this could be molded together, so that we are, so that these other, to me, it's an important event, Fourth of July, is not downgraded. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Arden, and thankfully, Doug, you can maybe.
Yeah, I think, and I certainly, I'm happy to report to you, Arden, and to everyone out there, that these events are alive and well, they are continuing to grow, and we continue to support them through our efforts, and will continue to do so. I think that this, this kind of, the new events that you see, kind of does reach out to a little bit different audience than traditionally the Oak Creek has done in the past. I think that's a great thing, because that introduces this new audience, the great traditions that this community has held dear for so many years. So, we're not phasing anything out, we're not losing anything, I think we're actually growing the audience and growing the respect for some of the more traditional celebrations that we always have had, and hopefully always will have.
Thank you, Doug, and I'm happy to note that all the events that Arden did mention actually continue to exist. Some are carried on by the Celebrations Committee, which continues to exist, and others by outside agencies. So, I think all around, and especially given the advertising and outreach the city and the Tourism Commission have done in terms of how they go about getting citizens and engage and coming to these events, use various different means that go to obviously different audiences. Given by the Cory statistics, we can tell we're reaching everyone in the city and thankfully having good success at it. Great, we'll move on. And item number nine, Cory thinks, is the Treasury Report on Investment and Banking Accounts for the month ending November 30th, 2017. I don't see Barb in the audience, so we'll be taking that in summary form. Anybody have any comments or questions on that, that we could relay to Barb in the meantime? Great, it's pretty straightforward. Obviously, text collection season, that is not text collection season, but we'll see those change dramatically now that December, January months will roll into those. That will be posted to the city's website tomorrow morning, so if anyone from the outside is interested to see that, it'll be available shortly. Item number 10 is a resolution approving a license agreement between the City of Oak Creek and Wisconsin Technology Networking LLC. Who's got that? Mike?
I can take that, Ken. Wisconsin Technology Networking LLC, WITN for short, approached the city several months ago, and in fact, exceeding a year ago, with the request to locate their facilities within the public right-of-way. And they have shown to us that they are a certified, they're certified by the Public Service Commission as a public utility. As such, they have certain rights to locate within public right-of-way, and this is nothing that we purely took their word on, this was something that was looked into and researched by legal. And over the course of those many months, we have been back and forth with asking for additional information. To WI10's credit, they have been very responsive to those requests, and have provided us answers for our questions. And basically, where we are now is they have a current request in for locating their equipment on an existing city light pole. I've got it up on the screen, this is in North Branch Industrial Park, right on the, or right on the limits of, basically near the intersection of North Branch Drive and 13th Street. So, in a commercial industrial district. And that is the light pole you see on the south side of the street, closest to, first pole in from 13th Street. Again, a lot of time has been spent by a lot of staff on this, trying to make sure that we understand what are our options, what are our obligations per state statutes, and really trying to protect the city from these installations, from an aesthetic and a safety and a functionality standpoint. We feel that we've gotten to the point where we have a good understanding of what is being requested. And basically, this request is for what is termed small cell equipment. Basically, WITN is communications, I guess, service provider, and they are providing infill, if you will, of the network, as data demands have expanded, and continue to expand rapidly in the industry. So, we were satisfied with what they showed us. We talked with the SLT group about, should we allow this installation on our light pole? And I'm going to bring up a second page here for, on the left, you see the light pole in its current configuration. On the right, you see the equipment that they would be, that they are proposing be installed at this location. And staff was directed to get back in touch with WI10 and say, you're using our pole, is there compensation available to be offered? And they indicated that indeed their current policy is that, yes, they will provide compensation as a license agreement gets entered into, and that's what the proposal is here, to enter into this license agreement. And so, the agreement was drafted. Melissa Carls and I worked closely back and forth with WITN, got it to a point where we have an agreement that we feel is acceptable to bring before the council for a recommendation to, or approval. Basically, it provides for compensation in the amount of $1,000 per year per location, and this would be the first location, and then it has an escalator, or 3% per year. So, this 1,000 was based on 2017, so we're already into 2018. At any rate, WITN tells us that this is really the one and only location they are looking at currently, that's not to say that they won't come back and say, okay, we've found a second location that we'd like to apply for. This agreement provides that every location that they request would be an additional supplement to this agreement. So, it is not providing carte blanche for them to spring up these locations throughout the city, we would deal with each location as they come before us. So, I think that's all I have, and I'd be happy to try and answer questions.
Great, thanks, Mike. Andrew?
I think just to nutshell what Mike has explained to the council, and it's really important, because Mike and City Attorney Carls did a great job on this. Everybody is well aware of the legislative changes over the recent years, where local control over cellular apparatus has been all but rendered moot. And so, to think that we are getting, you know, compensation for the city taxpayers, we have probably a better, I would say, not even we have probably a better, I would say, not even arguably, a better aesthetic with the small cell technology. But credit to these two, two have negotiated that when the legislature has left us in a position where we had no negotiation position. Also, credit, I think, to W, WITN in this, in that, you know, they wanted to come into this community as good, as good partners. So all around, I think, you know, this is, we're, we're definitely foraying into something, some, some uncharted territory, but I'm certainly satisfied and commend the staff here for, for putting this together for the council to, to take a look at.
Thank you, Andrew. Anybody? Steve?
Is there anybody from WITN here? I, I have a question for that person.
Great, sir. Come to podium, name and address for the record, then.
My name is Jay Went, 861 Raven Court, Oregon, Wisconsin. Representing Wisconsin Technology Network.
Thank you. Mike kind of gave us a very generic idea of what it might be used for, but could you give me, or give us a, like, what kind of business would use this and what, what would they get out of this? And, I mean, I'm, yeah, I mean, exactly. I mean, is it something the public is going to be able to tap into or, or just, give me a, give us a?
I'll, I'll give you the, the quick spiel on what mobility WITN does. Essentially, what we do is we're, we're a, a utility in a sense, where we provide cellular infrastructure for the major carriers. And, and right now, our deployment in Wisconsin is primarily on behalf of Sprint. So what we do is we find gaps or holes or failure points in their networks, and we plug in infrastructure like these small cells to essentially give better coverage. What this is paramount to, I guess, or ends up with, is stepping stones towards what 5G will become. So this is about data, data, and more data. And so as we all grab these things out of our pockets and check email, or text, or Facebook, or whatever it might be, we are putting more and more demands on the national network from a data standpoint. So unlimited data is one of the things that's driving this. So what we're doing is we're finding gaps in Sprint's network right now and plugging holes in theirs.
Thank you. Steve? Yeah? Any else have a question, other rep? Greg?
I'm just curious, obviously, this seems like a better option than a giant cell tower, much smaller and kind of blended in with the light pole. Moving forward, in addition to this one light pole, if they start springing up throughout the city, is the, is the standard the same as a full cell tower as far as they need to provide their search radius? What other options they looked into? Is that kind of across the board the same? Or is this a little different than those?
In terms of what, what we'll provide for the application?
Correct.
Generally, it's, it's what you guys would request that any other user of the right-of-way would provide, engineering drawings and that. Generally, when it comes to search rings and things like that, those are fairly proprietary, and those aren't really generally the things that I'm even available to look at. But a small cell, in a sense, is not replacing macro towers. It's not going to do away with that. What I think it will do ultimately is allow less of them to be built because we're able to target that infill in a more appropriate way. Will all of a sudden the City of Oak Creek see 500 of these things come? No, no. These are an easy way to target a density center. So where there is a high data demand, we can drop one of these in for a fraction of the cost of a macro tower. So it's a very targeted way to hit availability.
Will it help me get a cell phone call on my kitchen table?
Ultimately, yes. Yeah, I mean, I mean, I think that the way that the industry sees small cells going is moving away from Wi-Fi in a sense, and we're streaming data, I mean, long-term. And then these might someday in the very distant future end up, you know, on street corners all over in every neighborhood to really fill in that data connection. But that's not what it's intended for right now. Ultimately, yeah, it could.
Mike, Melissa, I got the impression from the verbiage and that Mike discussed that each one would potentially be a one-off, new discussion in terms of cell siting and requirements and things like that. And I think for the, for, in general, I think on the bottom of the staff report, the options alternative, I speak to, I think, the, the lucrative, and I wouldn't say necessarily lucrative, but it's best outcome we could look at, potentially have gotten one-time $75 fee and kind of told what we were going to do, basically, if we didn't have a cooperative relationship. So appreciate you working with that.
And, and thank you to you all, and thank you to staff specifically to really work with us.
I did have one other question, too, and I didn't get a chance, and maybe Melissa can answer that, too. The agreement we're about to memorialize and approve, any exclusive clauses in here that give you any rights over and above anybody other carrier?
Generally, that would be regulated by the PSC as well, so.
And you, you said you were representing Sprint?
On behalf of this, this installation specifically, yes. Nationally, we do.
I would argue that you maybe look at other spots and all, for sure.
I would argue as well.
Yeah, and, and one of the things is, you know, they, they made large promises of unlimited data, and we're finding ways to make that more capable.
13th and Pute. My kitchen table.
That's it.
All right, any other questions, comments? Greg, can we get a motion on that, then?
Thank you all.
Kerkowski make a motion to adopt resolution number 11897-011618, approving a license agreement between the City of Oak Creek and Wisconsin Technology Network LLC.
Oracle second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kerkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenia.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Great, item number 11 is a motion to concur with the mayor's appointment to a planning commission vacancy. That was most recently by Wally Dickman, three-year term for Christine Hannah, 1222 West Oakwood Road. Christine is, Christine's board application is attached, if anyone had any questions or comments or whatever, but seems overly qualified, but we'll take it if we can get it on. Anybody? Questions, comments, or a motion, then, please?
Kerkowski make a motion to concur with the mayor's appointment to appoint Christine Hannah to the planning commission for a three-year term expiring in four of 2019.
Oracle second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenia.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Great, item number 12 is the vendor summary report, a motion to approve the vendor summary report for December 22nd, 2017, combined total of $491,769.09. Bridge is not in the audience today, but fairly straightforward. You can see the summary of the items on the staff report. Comments, questions? Great, we'll need a motion, then.
Kerkowski make a motion to approve the December 22nd, 2017 vendor summary report in the combined total amount of $491,769.09.
Oracle second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Dukenia.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Great, item number 13, looking for a motion to approve the January 10th, 2018 vendor summary report in the amount of $856,418.77. Staff report has the summary items on the face of it. Any comments, questions, anybody? Great, I'll need a motion on that.
Kerkowski make a motion to approve the January 10th, 2018 vendor summary report in the combined total amount of $856,418.77.
Oracle second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenia.
Aye.
Great, item number 14, we have the folks at the fire department with us tonight. We're going to consider a motion to approve the purchase of 2018 Braun ambulance with a Ford chassis in the amount of $250,000. Tom, you're taking that straight away?
Here, I'll start it off. Through the budget process of this, this past fall in the CIP, a continuation of, as we slowly get out of the recession and, and the extension of, of the age of our fleet and, and working to improve it slowly and efficiently, our next on a list here is the ambulance replacement. Most of our current even, except for our latest new one, are all over 100,000 miles. The one we're asking replaced is 129,000 miles. It's about 11 years old. The usual customary life of an ambulance is roughly seven to 10 years. So the age of the fleet, the, the ride isn't quite as smooth, there's, there's more maintenance costs. And as, as we learn here with our new ambulance, and I'll let Mike speak to the technical side of it, that the safety aspects are, are much improved on our newer ambulances. And through the bidding process, that this does come just under the $250,000 mark that was approved at budget time. So, and as a side note, our engine did stay under budget from last year. Want to speak, Mike, on the technical side a little bit?
Assistant Chief Mike AV Fire. Some of the areas that our committee looked at was the loading systems, new ambulances now have a power load system. So that was kind of a significant change from our past ambulances that were utilizing some technology and new equipment, so that the end user is not actually lifting of the patient and the stretcher itself. So that hopefully reduces liability for injuries. The other air right, the system that the suspension is on is a liquid spring suspension, which is our past ambulance. We've got good feedback from that ambulance and its ride compared to older ones. As far as the power stretcher, we do have a power stretcher, we'll be able to adapt that one to fit in our power load system. Other than that, any other questions?
Do you have some? Mike, this was, this is the second Braun you've gotten, and you're very happy with them?
That's correct, yes, our second unit.
And Tom, from a budget standpoint, we're good on ambulance replacements for how long now?
We'll, we'll probably be back again next year with the, with the third front line. Like I said, all, all of our remaining ambulances are over 100-some thousand, and they're all, if, if you look, they're in the 2006, 2007 range. So, and we'll stay within, you know, we're not going to have anything earth-shattering. What comes in, in the 19 CIP also, though, is our grass fire rig, and that's 1997, so that's more than 27 years old. So, and, and that's more of a pickup-style type of vehicle, so nothing really outlandish. So, and if you look further down the road, and it's probably a three-year process, is our platform, our aerial device will be, need to replace, we're looking at 2022, 2023, and that'll be phased in over, over the years, keeping within the budget to, to afford that. So that's kind of the, the future outlook on apparatus.
Any other questions to the chief or Mike? Great, we'll need a motion, then, on item 14.
Kuzakowski makes a motion to approve the purchase of 2018 Braun ambulance with a Ford chassis in the amount of $250,000.
Oracle second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenia.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye. Water and sewer utility, item number 15 is to consider resolution endorsing the proposed water quality improvement project, including advanced disinfection for the protection of public health, and we have our illustrious utility director, Mike Sullivan, with us tonight to discuss this. Mike?
Good evening. I can give you a brief on this. The project is a, been on the books for quite a long time. We've been working on this project since about 2008, 2007, when it was recognized in our last treatment plant expansion by the DNR, brought it to our attention that our underground buried chlorine contact tank had some problems, had some code compliance issues that posed a potential public health threat. It's all associated with the fact that the tank is buried, it's covered, it's got a grass lawn on top of it, it does not have a membrane to it prevent water from leaking in through the top. It's not double-lined, so groundwater could potentially force its way in through the sides of the tank. It's not put above the groundwater, the floor of it is not above the groundwater elevation, so that poses a concern as well. It doesn't have a vent on top. There's seven different code compliance issues that the DNR had. Now, when the tank was installed in 1973, it was code compliant, but it was a storage tank at that point. In 1997, to keep up with the current disinfection regulations, we converted it to a chlorine disinfection tank, or a CT tank, is, is what we call it. Since that time, as I mentioned, in 2008, the DNR recognized as code considerations or code compliance issues, they said you need, you need to take care of this. And we said, well, wait a minute, we're already in the middle of a treatment plant expansion project that's, at that time, I think the cost is about $12 million. We can't afford to do this project now. Would you please give us 10 years to try and get our finances on order, in order to develop some alternatives to try and make this project work? They did. We have since come back, went to the Public Service Commission in 2015 with a project, and we're, we're still trying to seek that Public Service Commission approval for a project down at the treatment plant location. The DNR has approved two different versions of this project over time. The current version they have approved is well back in June of 17, so we're ready to go as soon as we receive the Public Service Commission approval. So what we'd like to do is show through this resolution a couple of things, and, and one is to show that the community is behind the, the public health protection project that we plan down there, and also to show that there's a desire for advanced disinfection, putting something additional into the treatment process that protects us positively against cryptosporidium. Obviously, everyone remembers, and I don't need to go into what happened in 1993 in Milwaukee, we were not affected by that here in Oak Creek. But since that time nationally, lots of utilities have done things. And here in Wisconsin, 17 of the 19 surface water treatment utilities have done something to their plant. Port Washington and Oak Creek have not, and Port Washington has their project designed and ready to go into the Public Service Commission. So it's something we need to keep up on. We know that there's a huge public need for this. It's something that we need to add, and we want to be able to endorse that advanced disinfection, going above and beyond what minimum regulations are in order to protect the public health of the customers that are drinking our water. So with that, I, I think I kind of laid out the pluses and minuses and what the project's a bit about in the resolution. Any questions? I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Questions, Mike? Oh, I know it has been a long-term struggle, so we appreciate you sticking with it, and we've obviously had a move past the Waukesha discussion that unfortunately interloped into this project, but it is what it is. So now we move on, and it really is a project focused on the quality and protecting not only the citizens of Oak Creek in terms of its water, but the customers we serve, the wholesale provider of water. Good luck with that. We'll need a motion, then, on item number 16, which we'll consider is the ordinance established local sewer, or sewer, excuse me. Item 15 is the resolution endorsing the public proposed water quality improvement project. We'll need a motion on that.
Dukenia moved to approve resolution number 11903-011618 endorsing the proposed water quality improvement project, including advanced disinfection for the protection of public health.
Kuzakowski.
Roll call.
Alderman, Kerkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenia.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Also from the water utility, item number 16, ordinance number 2894 establishing local sewer rates for the City of Oak Creek Water and Sewer Utility. Mike's back.
Thank you very much. This is super simple. The freight medical complex, when they built their building, asked us for a two-and-a-half-inch sewer meter, water meter. At that time, they, it was due to the design of their facility, they couldn't fit a three-inch meter in there, so we said, sure, there's one available, we'll put that in. And, and really looked at our records, and we don't have a line item for a two-and-a-half-inch meter. We have gotten that changed in the water rates through the PSC. This is to add this for the sewer rates as well. There's no change in sewer rate charges to anybody, it just adds this meter specification for freighter.
Questions, comments, for Mike?
Franklin, okay with it?
Boom. Who's he? I feel on fire. Great, thanks, Mike. All right, we'll need a motion on item 16, then.
Dukenia moved to approve ordinance number 2894 establishing local sewer rates for the City of Oak Creek Water and Sewer Utility.
Oracle second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenia.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski. Thank you. Out of community development, item number 17 is a resolution to consider an approving a certified survey map for Brian and Jenny Stromowski for the property at 1825 East Drexel Avenue. Doug, is that yours?
Sure, thank you. So the property, 1825 East Drexel Avenue, Stromowski's approached the city with the CSM to subdivide that parcel into two properties. Pretty straightforward, the, the property is owned correctly, and during the planning commission's review, they did adopt it or recommend their approval subject to three conditions, first being that there is an officially mapped street pattern for future Drexel Avenue, and that the additional right-of-way per the official map be dedicated per the city's subdivision ordinance. There's some conditions with the obtaining a street opening permit on Drexel Avenue for the water main. And there was also a condition, as, as you can see on, you might be able to see on this, there is an encroachment of, on the existing property, of a shut-down to the property that's owned by MMST. The planning commission has, in their recommendation, asked that that be removed, and they've given some time for the applicant to remove that. So the planning commission, again, has reviewed this, they've recommended their approval subject to those three conditions.
Brian's in the audience, if anyone have any questions, comments on this?
I just, I've had discussions with Mr. Stromowski in regard to this, and I, I know that he has brought up some concerns in regard to the conditions which need to be met in order to move forward with the CSM. So I encourage Mr. Stromowski So I encourage Mr. Stromowski to attend tonight's meeting to share his concerns with the remainder of the council.
Right, welcome. Name an address for the record.
Hi, Brian Stromowski, 8634 South Shepherd Avenue is where I reside right now. So, when I purchased the property, I realized that there was a easement in the front of the property that was 20 foot by 250 foot long. The total property is 250, basically 250 by 250. So I realized there was an easement. On January 5th, I received the email from Kerry Papabon, and this is what it says, "There was an error on the map that was just noticed. The 20-foot easement is also within the future right of Drex, for Drexel Ave. This portion would be requested to be dedicated to the city. Would you have any concerns about having your survey revised to CFM indicating such dedication?" Of course I do. That staff will also be included in the same, blah, blah. Okay, so anyway, I get this letter, I didn't think much about it. I don't know a whole lot about all these terms and so on and so forth, but as I see it, a right of way is the same as eminent domain. Basically, the city wants to take 10% of my property and not compensate me, justly compensate me whatsoever. Um, I don't agree with having to put this on a, on my map without being compensated. That's the bottom line, really. Read up on it, and what I see it as is eminent domain.
Doug?
Yeah, a couple of things. I think that the correspondence referred to, I think, the request is more of a politeness. It's not a request, it's a requirement. It's in chapter 14, it's applied to all, all subdivision of lands, and I can show you that, and show the council that as well, somewhere. And I'll read it to you, says, "Whenever a parcel will be subdivided and embraces any part of a street, highway, or greenway designated in set comprehensive plan official map, such part of such proposed public way shall be planted and dedicated by the subdivider in the location and with indicated along with all the streets in the subdivision." So I certainly can appreciate your concerns about the dedication of that. Although, I mean, I've, I've got to tell you, it is a requirement in our municipal code, when you, when you, as a subdivider, or developer in this instance, subdivided land, and if there's an officially mapped street there, our code requires that dedication. If there is an alternative to that, I would suggest that maybe take a look at the official map in terms of whether or not that a future right of way for Drexel Avenue is, might be excessive, in which case we may not need to require that dedication. But it kind of goes along with the game of, of developing property and subdividing property under our statutes, under our codes, that if you're a developer and there's officially mapped street on your property, it gets dedicated. It's not a matter of eminent domain, it's not a matter of, you know, selectively, you know, who we go after in terms of enforcing ordinance, as we have to enforce it across the board, and that's what the ordinance says.
I believe also it was mentioned, if you go back to the street map.
Sure, Doug, please.
I was looking in our plant commission meeting notes, but we had talked about the other neighbors along Drexel there that would ultimately also be, a CSM would have to happen if they'd need a, a right of way over there as well. So the same would apply to them all the way down the street. It's, it's not just your property.
Absolutely. I think the confusion may have come in, in the sense that when we, the city did the Drexel Avenue project, the city did acquire a right of way, but that was a city initiated project, there was no subdivision of land involved, and when, and this happens all across the city, and I don't believe that we're alone in that respect within the state of Wisconsin, that when there's something on the official map, the mechanism there for is for that right of way to be dedicated.
Well, I guess I'm just going to verify on my end what the difference is here between right of way and eminent, eminent domain. So I'd like some time to take a look at that.
Sure, maybe, maybe if I can, right of way is the area that is held in public ownership for a roadway or infrastructure improvement. So there really is no direct apples to apples comparison between right of way and eminent domain. Eminent domain is a, a legal concept where a, a public entity for the public good can go through a process of acquiring land or property in many cases for infrastructure such as roadway. But the right of way, for instance, if you made the decision, or the property owner made the decision, well, I, I'm not subdividing, and the city wanted to go and expand Drexel Avenue to the future right of way, then the city would have to go through a process, hopefully it doesn't go to the process of eminent domain, certainly we'd, we'd go through a process of negotiating with the property owner. And, so I mean, it's, it's not, you or any owner of property making the choice to subdivide has to do it in accordance with the rules, and that is a rule.
Doug, if I can interject for a moment, the map here that projects this future right of way, or when was that created?
Oh, that's, I mean, it's, the right of way for Drexel, and it's a big right of way. And I think that, I mean, if there's some merit, and I certainly understand that we're showing about 130 foot right of way, future right of way on Drexel Avenue. And certainly, having redone the roadway in the recent past, it's a relatively new facility. I think, if I'm not mistaken, and maybe Mike, not to put you on the spot, but I think Drexel Avenue was set up as a boulevard cross-section at some point, and that's why it's such a pretty expansive right of way. I think in this case, that's just what happens, that that future right of way corresponds with an easement that's located there. So it's, you know, and, and I can understand the, and appreciate the kind of philosophical argument against adhering to the code in this respect, but in, well, in reality, in actuality, that 20 feet would not be available because it would be in that easement anyway. But I certainly know where you're coming from.
Doug, what year was this?
Don't know.
So it's, okay. The reason I ask that is, and I know there are, there are other issues involved in this analogy that I'm going to give you, but I'm just, and this is not foreign to Mike, as soon as I bring this up, he's going to know exactly what I'm talking about. But I have a resident in my district who has a right of way on his property, adjacent to his property, and it was supposed to be a future street, and it's never, ever going to get built. The city has abandoned the idea of even creating a street there. I mean, it's just, it's not going to happen. But he has this daily fight with trying to eliminate this, this easement and right of way, well, it's, in his case, it's an easement, but for this future street that goes back decades. So my concern is penalizing a, a property owner who wants to do something, or something that may never happen. So he's forced with consenting to our demands per code when the whims of the city planners, whenever this occurred, says, oh, I think we might, someday we might put a street here. Well, if the day comes and the city wants to put a street there, then let's deal with the property owners, but not let's force him to do something that may never happen. Because again, I have a resident who, you know, it's never going to happen, but he's stuck with what, what's there because there's other underlying issues. So I, I'm a, I guess I'm against trying to tell the property owner, well, you have to do this because someday, and someday may never come, you have to concede to our wants and wishes.
Well, and I guess I would draw an exception or really point out that, you know, we're not operating on the whims of anybody. This is based on adopted thoroughfare plan. I think the thoroughfare plan itself was adopted initially, I think we've got a mile back in the age from 1972, and the official maps are, are constantly updated according to, I mean, whatever changes the council sees fit. This is not discretionary, folks. I mean, if, and we, we don't enforce this selectively, we can enforce ordinances selectively. That's why I've kind of threw open the door. If you as a council want to take a look at that section of the official map, to see if the right of way, or the future right of way for Drexel Avenue does not meet your expectations with respect to, again, the, the width for that facility, I think we're more than happy to do that. But I, I think it's a, it can be a challenging thing to selectively enforce your ordinances.
I have a question as well, Doug. I'm not understanding something. You mentioned other residents along Drexel Avenue. If, if a, a new development or that the road plan were to take place, the city would have to enter into negotiations with them? What, what is exactly negotiations? Is that payment for?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we bought right of way.
So, Mr. Stromowski is being, and I guess it's in accordance with the ordinance, he's being penalized for, for wanting to develop.
Well, Mr. Stromowski, any, any developer.
Right.
Is making the choice to develop a property.
Okay.
In accordance with the regulations of the community they're developing.
It just seems weird that someone that's potentially adding to the city's tax bases is penalized.
And when you look at it from the, the other perspective, and again, recognizing that this may not be the best example, given that Drexel Avenue is a relatively new facility, it is, there is a fiscal impact if we do not enforce that ordinance, and then at the time when the facility is, requires upgrading, do in part, in many cases, the development that is taking place adjacent to it, then that's everybody's that's paying for, for acquisition of that right of way.
Greg, you have some?
A quick question. If the CSM is approved, and he dedicates the land as he's apparently supposed to, and in the future, if the official map is relooked at, and that right of way is shrunk, what, I mean, does the land go back to him, or what happens?
If the right of way is vacated, yes.
Oh, okay.
I mean, yeah, Doug, you made the point, but you know, this is, I, I see the, the wisdom of, of this, of this, uh, code. Okay. You're, you're getting the right of way now. You've got a road planned there, when is it going to happen? It's not clear right now, but that was the vision one day. Drexel is a collector road, it is a main thoroughfare. We need one more lane of traffic on the outside, we've got the right of way. We don't have it now, Mr. Stromowski builds, then we are buying the right of way and potentially paying damages because now his home is very close to the roadway. So, I mean, that's, that's the, the thought behind this requirement.
Yeah, this strikes me as, it's kind of unfortunately one of those, you live in a community that's been planned, and therefore you're subject to the kind of the whims of the housekeeping nature, the ordinances that govern that planning. So I think, Brian, you probably got a decision to make on whether or not you actually want to maybe hold the CSM for the meeting and decide if in fact you want to actually divide your property. If he doesn't divide the property, this does not come into play, right?
No, not at all.
So I guess that's where you're at, Brian, for tonight, is if you want to think about this or wrestle with this more, and, but other than that, it seems to be you are, you are at the whims of the unfortunate housekeeping nature of the ordinances that govern our, our planning here, that this right of way is, if you subdivide this property, the right of way is dedicated, is required.
And that, and that's because, and what, they wanted to show on the map now so they don't have to come back later and do it. Why not just do it later? Why not do it somewhere down the line when it's really going to happen?
Because the property, you know, fronts the road, the road is at some point in the comprehensive plan and the future plan, potentially seen as a boulevard construction, potentially with 130 foot width. You know, that's, that's, that's the whole planning process the city goes through. You look at these things and you put them on a map and property's at a bottom, that's how they have to deal with themselves. I think that's where you're at, Brian, if you want to wrestle with this a little more and think about it, you got to ask to have it hold, held then.
That's good. Yeah, we'll leave that one, and then can we move on to the next part of?
You want to talk about the shed situation?
Yeah, I do.
Yeah.
So, we went through this at the planning, the other meeting last week, and I want to just make sure that everybody here knows that, all right, so I'm sitting here with this, with the existing house and a shed that's been there for 25 years, very nice shaped shed, it's on a, it's on a, on a slab and everything really looks nice, and I find out after I close on the property that Milwaukee Metro is saying it's on their property, okay? So I get ahold of the layer at MMSD, and he writes me a very nice letter here saying, hey, Brian, I don't have a problem with what you have of leaving this shed there as long as you keep it good, blah, 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 you can leave it alone. No, the city wants me to tear it down. You know, come on, it just, it's just ridiculous. I understand it's whatever, what is it, a statue, or I don't even, I don't even know code, or what, what, you know, now that I'm subdividing the land, they know, they know the shed's there and it's sitting an inch on, on MMSD's land, and it's not, not in compliant. I mean, there's such things as grandfathers in the city, or what? I mean, come on, it's, it's just, it's crazy. It's just, you know, and, oh yeah, you can, we'll give you until July 1st to tear it down. Well, hmm, you know, I don't know.
Doug, can you shed any color here?
You know, I, I guess I would defer to Chris, I mean, with the discussion that took place at the plant commission level, I think that certainly there might be some discretion here on the part of the council in terms of a couple of factors, A, whether or not the, the shed is able to remain, or B, you know, timing of, of said removal, but I think that there was some discussion that took place around that at the plant commission meeting.
Really, you know, the discussion that we had, I mean, it was kind, it's, it's one of those, it's a catch 22 right now. I mean, if, if you, you build, you know, the second lot because of the setbacks, you're in a situation where it's too close to the property line, so that was what I recall from plant commission. Greg?
I, I kind of took away from that meeting that he was basically told that it's a code violation, it's over the lot line, that's not allowed, it's got to be torn down. I don't, it'd be nice if there was some way to get a variance that we could allow him to keep it if the other property owner is okay with it. I, we were both basically told, the plant commission was basically told, it's code violation, can't be on the property land like it is.
Yeah, I have, in, in the final letter here from attorney Joseph Ganzer with Milwaukee Metro Sewer, it says, "We have no intention of seeking a raise order or taking any enforcement action at this time." So they have, they have four things here that say, hey, if you, if you keep the thing clean and blah, 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 we're okay with it. So I have a letter from them, the people that own the land, saying they're okay with it, you know, let's, you know, everything doesn't have to be by the book, but, you know, what else can I say? I have a businesses in this city, that does a lot of business in the city, I pay taxes on that business of $23,000 a year. I pay $11,000 a tax a year on my own house that I live in right now, and, you know, I come in front of this board and come in front of all these meetings, and it just, it seems, you know, I understand there's laws in this, but there are some gives and takes here. I mean, it just, it just doesn't make any sense to tear it out on a perfectly good shed, especially when the other, where it's sitting, and the other owner doesn't have a problem, and it's not bothering anybody. So, what I got to say, I don't know if there's any way around that.
So, Brian, since it is part of the original action for tonight, you'll need to figure out if you want to move forward, the resolution as it is, which is going to require dedication of the right of way and the shed removal, or if you want to sit in this for a bit and hold it for the time being, we put an official hold on it as a council.
For the next meeting?
Whenever you want to bring it back, then you can wrestle with this and come back.
So I guess, and maybe to separate the two issues, and I think we talked about the first issue enough. I mean, if there are ways, yeah, within the purview of what's allowable through the city, through the plant commissions, the county council, to let that shed stay, we want to make sure that you're not confused by direction that was given you, and if there is a way for the council to allow that to remain, we'll, we'll research that in short order and, and get back to you. We're certainly not want to be vindictive in any way with respect to a, a property owner or a situation that's been existing for, for a number of years. You know, and we, I guess, don't have the luxury of looking at, well, property owner A pays this much in taxes, or has been here for 30 years versus property owner B who may not have that much a stake in the community. I mean, a fair application of the code is what we are bound to do. So please don't take that as signaling you or anybody out, it's our job to enforce the code fairly. And what you see as unfairly, or as unfair, is just something that in your particular circumstance, there are things that you don't agree with, and rightly so, and we, we acknowledge that. So if there are ways, especially of allowing that shed to remain, I'm not adverse to looking at those, I'm really not. But I think to characterize this as the whims of staff or things of that nature, I think it's a mischaracterization.
I wasn't implying, I wasn't. I wasn't implying, I wasn't implying that at all.
I know, it's, things can get a little...
Yeah. It's such a thing as a variance, we can wrap this up, is there such a thing that I can go through as a variance on this or anything?
You can, Brian, it is a tenuous process, rarely successful, and given your situation expected it, obviously visibly on a property line like that.
Well, rather than, let's find out. Let's find out what can and cannot be done.
So, withdrawing, holding. Melissa, maybe you have a comment on, maybe please forward here, Brian.
Good for thought, Brian, would be if you're wanting to explore some additional pieces, and if staff is therefore going to take some time to look further into a number of items, then perhaps you'd want to consider, and I'm not encouraging you to do anything other than you're inclined to do, hold this. I'd probably recommend just for all of us to hold to no later than a date certain, at least at this point, and then if we needed to bring it back, we could.
Sure, I mean, if I don't, if I have to take it down, I want to take it down, I've got to, I'm going to move forward no matter what way somehow with doing this, so.
Are you building this year on that property, Brian?
This year, possibly, I don't know.
You've got some...
Yeah, I don't have anything planned yet, I don't have a house, I don't...
Ken?
Yeah.
On the back page of this Common Council report, by the way, nice form, I like the way it's presented, it says options, alternatives, and I'm sure everybody's read this, but it says council has the discretion to modify the conditions of certified survey map approval or deny the request. Well, to me, that means that the council would have the option to modify it by saying, without having to go through that whole lengthy Board of Zoning Appeals or all that other, the variance requests or whatever by the property owner, it seems the council would have the authority to simply say that shed can stay because the property owner, or the adjacent property owner says it's okay. I mean, that would be the modification that, that we could suggest without having to go through all that other process. If we can't, then this is wrong. I mean...
Oh, it's not wrong.
We've changed other, you know, just by lining things out and making changes, I mean, this seems to be no different than saying...
It's not incorrect in the sense that where the council has discretion, or does not contradict the municipal code, you certainly have the ability to change those conditions. Like I expressed earlier, if there is a way to keep a shed, I want to find a way to make that happen.
Because I understand...
But if there's not, there's not, but if there is a way, we'll find a way to make it happen.
I understand planning goes through the process, and this is, you know, and then, and then we kind of go through like a, you know, back and forth negotiation here, and this is kind of what we're doing, but if there's a way simply by council action to modify, notwithstanding the right-of-way issue, but the shed issue, if council can say, you know, "We're okay with letting it stay where it is because MMSD says it's okay", then we should be able to just modify that.
Let's find out.
Alderman Kerkowski, I'd like, Doug has volunteered to have his staff look at this, let them take a whack at it, and see if we can come to some kind of fix. Brian, is a month, or is a month enough time, Doug, second meeting in February?
Oh, yeah.
Does that give you enough?
What date is that, February?
Twenty.
February 20th?
Oh, sure, yeah, no problem. And I just want to say, I don't, I want to apologize if I made it sound, I was not going after anybody in particular here, I'm just stating a few facts, maybe, I apologize for...
So, Brian, your wish then is to hold the item until February 20th, the Common Council meeting?
Yeah.
And you can wrestle with the right-of-way situation?
Sure.
Doug's group will try and get a handle on this.
Okay.
Yeah, so we'll need a motion to hold then.
Okay, and Doug, thank you for, you know, taking a look into that.
It's, you know, sometimes we can't, you know, make it, make everyone's wishes possible, and where we can, we try to accommodate people, but there's times where, you know, while we'd love to be able to do that kind of thing, I mean, we have to fall back on statute.
So, with that...
Doug, you want to make that?
Sure.
You just made a motion to hold until February 20th, Common Council?
Dukenyak moved to hold Resolution 11904-011618 approving a certified survey map for Brian and Jenny Stromowski for the property at 1825 East Drexel Avenue until the February 20th, Common Council meeting.
Gudzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Gudzakowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
Great. Item number 18, ordinance 2896 adopting an amendment to the comp plan for the properties at 410 and 500 West Drexel Avenue.
Thank you, yes. So the properties across the street from us, on Drexel Avenue at 410 and 500 West Drexel Avenue, which the council is familiar with, given some of the discussions that have taken place in the past about redevelopment of those properties, this comprehensive plan change takes a look at that and changes that, that land use on those properties from plan industrial to plan mixed-use. It matches the redevelopment concept of the property, it is consistent with the adjacent land uses, especially specifically Drexel Town Square. It is a step in the process which will ultimately lead to the redevelopment, the cleanup, I'm sorry, and redevelopment of that site in a potential Tiff District, which will be being brought forward in the next few weeks and months. Plan Commission has held a public hearing with respect to the proposed change of the comprehensive plan. They have recommended via a resolution and proclamation that the plan be changed to incorporate the plan mixed-use designation. This action by the council, this ordinance by the council actually officially approves that amendment to the comprehensive plan for these properties.
Thanks, Doug. Comments, questions from the council? Steve?
Can I contact it, Carrie in Planning, they had this error prior, previous ordinance, it's really in the first district, not the second district, so if it makes a difference on the ordinance, it should be first, not second. She said she was going to make the change, but obviously with the agendas came out. For what it's worth.
Any other questions, comments? Plan change, we'll need a motion then.
Kirkowski can make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2896, adopting an amendment to the comprehensive plan for the properties at 410 and 500 West Drexel Avenue.
Oracle, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale?
Aye.
Gudzakowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
Dukenyak?
Aye.
Great, License Committee, we're taking a slightly different format that we've started this year, actually back to old way of doing business, so with that, I'll toss it over to Alderman Kirkowski.
Thank you. The return to the old process has taken away a lot of my airtime here.
Yay.
But, having said that, I'll talk slower now. Kirkowski make a motion to take action on the various license requests as listed on the January 16, 2018 License Committee Report.
Oracle, second.
Great, any comments, questions in the meantime?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Premature.
We didn't, all right, motion, or roll call, please.
Alderman Gudzakowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
Dukenyak?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Gudzakowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
Great, as a housekeeping, we will be taking no action out of the closed session item, so for that matter, a motion to adjourn.
Kirkowski make a motion to adjourn.
Oracle, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
Dukenyak?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Gudzakowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
Dukenyak?
Aye.
Great, as a housekeeping, we will be taking no action out of the closed session item, so for that matter, a motion to adjourn.
Kirkowski make a motion to adjourn.
Oracle, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
Dukenyak?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Gudzakowski?
Aye.
Great, now we're going to convene in the closed session, and we'll come back for action if required, after.
Oracle, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Lorik?
Aye.
Dukenyak?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Gudzakowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Great, as a housekeeping, we will be taking no action out of the closed session item, so for that matter, a motion to adjourn.
Kirkowski make a motion to adjourn.
Oracle, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Gudzakowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.